Okay, call the meeting to order in Stanford, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Newyordowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee May. Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Okay, do we have any public comment? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the authorization for payroll bills for town fund, general assistance, road, department and sewer. And then for my reports, the social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and the financial and passports report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Newyordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, let me take a motion to approve the minutes of October 28th, '24, the regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the minutes? Any issues? No, if not, roll call.
Trustee Newyordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Okay, now we have the privilege of being able to present our first recipients, of which one is here, of the Veterans Honor Roll for November, for the Veterans Day, in relationship with the Veterans Day. And I have an opportunity, I'm going to get up and say a few words, and then we have Ron get on up and we'll thank him directly.
We'll get you up there in a second, Ron. So when I was getting ready to talk a little bit here today, I remembered back when I was about to retire from the Navy, which by the way, Dick and I are both Navy, I'm sorry, and I know you're Air Force. My dad was Air Force, so we're okay. But I was thinking about when I was getting ready to retire, and I did the Veterans Day speech in Mount Prospect, for that last year before I retired, was that 2006, I guess it was. And I remember sitting and saying, well, boy, this is, you know, be the one time, one of the last times I put my uniform on for an event, and I'll be taking my uniform off. And then I realized that really, I never really can take my uniform off, or should take my uniform off. Because if I did, or if I do, and if our nation in a broader sense takes our uniform off, we're putting ourselves in a position where we're really putting ourselves in a position of danger. I think the benefits that we have in terms of freedom and in terms of the prosperity that we have is not paid for in one installment, it's paid for over the years, every minute, every hour of every day. And I think that if we stop paying for it, if we hang up our uniforms, us individually or as a nation, I think then we run into a problem where we can easily lose the benefits in that that we have. And I think there's a quote from John F. Kennedy that I just wanted to read for a second, I think that reflects that very well, in that he said, "A country can only be as great as its people want it to be, and a nation can only be as free as its people insist that it be, and that a nation's freedom is only as secure as its people's continued vigilance and determination allow it to be." And so I think what's important to look at at this point is that Ron, Jim, the other veterans, I think none of them ever really took off their uniform. They have been, over these years, always, always on duty as a ramp serviceman, or as a supervisor for operations, or as a husband, or as a citizen and a voter, and certainly as a legionnaire. And I think what really stands out in terms of not taking his uniform off, in Ron's case, is the work he's done with the schools on the Veterans Day, when they bring all the kids together, and the American Legion and VFW gets together these kids and makes sure they understand what Veterans Day stands for, what it means. And at that time, when I think they highlight to these kids that usually don't care about this much at all, you know, what their role and what their responsibility is going forward in life. It's not just those that served before, it's not just those that stood up to the call, but it's also for all of us going forward. Because if we don't stand up, and we just, in a sense, take our uniforms off as a nation, we will pay a price for it. And I really respect those veterans, my fellow veterans, who put the time and put the effort and the selfishness, the selflessness, and the sacrifice into serving their country. And I think that's becoming, I think that has, that cannot be lost, that sense of commitment and responsibility to the country, and willingness to serve cannot be lost, or we're going to pay a big price for it.
So Dick, if we want to, come on up here.
So I want to read just real quick here the bios of the two, our two recipients. I'll go with Jim first. Jim cannot be here tonight, he's unfortunately in Florida. But Jim Parker grew up as a military child, moving frequently as his father was a career Air Force officer. And in '66, Jim enlisted in the Air Force himself, serving until 1972, reaching the rank of tech sergeant. And his eligibility for the VFW came from a year-long tour in Vietnam in '68 to '69, while on active duty here in the BA from Midwestern University in Wichita Falls, Texas. After separating from the Air Force, he pursued a law degree from IIT, Chicago Kent College of Law, and practiced law for 33 years before retiring in 2015. He joined the VFW post in 2019. He serves as the lead writer for the post's award-winning newsletter, was appointed post adjutant in 2021. He's also involved with numerous other veterans and community organizations, including AMVETS, Post 66, the Honor Flight Chicago, and several other local service clubs. He's married and has a daughter, and he enjoys a lot of things. Unfortunately, one of them is the White Sox.
Cubs. Anyway, he's White Sox.
In any case, Jim could not be here tonight, but he is one of our two recipients, and he certainly deserves it, and we will be presenting Jim with plaques at a different occasion. Ron is here tonight with his wife. And Ron is born in Chicago in 1943, and developed an early passion for airplanes, leading him to enlist in the Air Force at the age of 19. From '62 to '66, he served as an aircraft mechanic specializing in hydraulic and pneumatic systems. I have no idea what that is, but you're obviously very good at it. That's why I drove ships, I didn't fix things. After completing basic training at Lackland Air Force Base and tech school at Amarillo Air Force Base, he was stationed at McCord Air Force Base in Washington. And from there, he was assigned on numerous, for different temporary duties to other bases where he had responsibilities and duties. Following his military service, he worked for United Airlines for 37 years, starting as ramp serviceman and eventually retiring in 2003 as supervisor of airport operations. About 13 years ago, so a while ago, he joined the American Legion to help fellow veterans, a role he really finds deeply fulfilling. He currently serves as adjutant for the Mount Prospect American Legion Post 525. That's a significant part of his work, is coordinating school visits during the Veterans Day, where he and members of Post 525 and the VFW Post 1337 engage with the students to share their experiences and to explain and talk about a little bit what Veterans Day is all about. And as addition, Ron finds especially rewarding. So Ron, if you could come on up.
Of course.
Do you want to read that?
Yes, sure. So, in this certificate of appreciation, proudly presented, honor of your service, courage, and most of all, your sacrifices, we'd like to thank you for your military service in the United States of America. Present on the day, November 25th, 2024.
Yeah, do you want to give?
No, 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 I want to just.
So move around so she can tell. Ron, do you have a word to?
Sure. This, we went to, I think it was 15 different schools this Veterans Day. We start November 1st till November 15th. And some of them, the kids performed for us, but most of them, we go into the classrooms, we go to the halls and everything. And it was just fantastic. Overall, I think we reached maybe at least three or four thousand kids.
That's fantastic.
And it's just, it's just so much fun, you know. And we had one part where we put them in the classroom, and we told them, okay, you think everybody fights with their, in the military? Okay, you three guys, you're the fighters, you're the artillery, you're the ground support. You stand up, you're going to be a truck driver, you're going to be a mechanic, you're going to be a cook, you're going to be, you know. And explain to them how the entire military works. And then we also talked to them about military and education, how they can go, like Jim Parker, went to four years of college, became a lawyer, and no student debt, because, you know. So we tried to explain a little bit of everything to the kids. And it just makes us really feel good.
Well, that's fantastic. I think that's really important, given that I think a lot of our kids don't get the experience or exposure to veterans and to what the role veterans in civic duty is. Thank you very much.
Makes me feel real good.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now, you guys don't have to stay, we got boys.
Should have worn my uniform. That was about 100 pounds ago, so I can't wear that uniform anymore. I have to have it taken out.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, it was nice talking to you.
You know, this Dave Perns?
Yes, I admit. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Sure. There you go. Yeah, you bet. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your service. I know, actually, yeah, I should talk to him, yeah.
And my husband was with United for 37 years, so we have another bond going, besides property taxes.
A lot of pressure.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you for coming.
All righty. Pardon? Yeah.
The raffle, we gotta wait.
Okay, we'll skip over that right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go to the reports.
All right, we'll go to reports. We'll go back to the raffle here. But the reports, we have the assessor's report.
Hopefully, you've read my written presentation. We were really very pleased with the luncheon that we had with the members of the various permit departments and the municipalities. I have noted that at least two of them have already submitted their monthly reports in the appropriate form, so we're really excited about that. And we may do this every other year, because there seems to be a good deal of turnover in those departments.
Yeah.
And particularly in the areas where we have a smaller geographic presence. So anyhow, it was well-attended and well-received, so we were pleased.
Good. Anything from the Cook County world here that we need to be aware of? That, it's always entertaining to hear you talk.
Well, yes, it usually is entertaining, but things have been rather quiet since that, you know, we've already gone through the county appeal and the Board of Review appeals. So Wheeling's under fire right now, as far as number of appeals being formed. It remains to be seen when we're going to be open next year. I'm, right now, it's just a guess, but what I'm concerned about is that they have extended the number of days you can appeal from 30 to 40, which will be a budgetary concern.
Oh.
I just thought I'd warn you about that.
Okay. I'm warned. No, that's good. All right, well, thank you very much then. Any questions for Connie?
No.
Okay. Then the clerks' report?
I just had one for you that wanted compensation details for the employees in the assessor's office, excuse me, and Administrator Piak got that information to them. And then the Mental Health and Wellness Committee has been meeting, and we are starting our first meeting with presentations from the agencies on Tuesday, so.
Good, great. Okay, any questions for the clerk?
No.
If not, okay, then I'll do the supervisors' report here. On a personnel front, we are, what is the title, a digital media coordinator? Or what do we, how do we define that?
Isabella.
You're, yeah, you're.
Digital communications specialist.
Okay, and you want to say something about who we hired, and a little bit about her?
Yes.
What her role is, yeah.
So, we hired a part-time, a digital communications specialist, another Isabella, so that's not confusing at all. But she's, was an intern at the city of Elmhurst, so she kind of has a little bit of background about how local government works, which is really handy for us. She just graduated college, where she graduated from escapes me at the moment. But she has been doing our social media graphics and wording and digital flyers, the toy distribution flyer she created completely. I'm really excited to have her on our team, she's going to be updating the website and freeing me up to do more outreach and programs and things like that, so. She started back in October, the end of October, and she's just kind of flown with, flying high with colors, so.
Good.
Excellent.
All right, thank you, Mandy. All right, also, what we're looking for from a personnel point of view, we're still looking for a bus driver, and that's an ongoing process. And then we're looking, we're beginning to look for a deputy administrator to replace Izzy as she moves up, takes Paul's position, as he's planning to retire in a couple months. I don't think there's a firm date right now, but he will retire in a couple months here. And so we're looking to bring someone in behind Izzy to fill her former position. From a construction point of view, the medical closet is going to be moving back to the main, the big room, the big room, storage room in the back. There's that little office space where you come, not the real little one, there's that office space near the door where you come in from the west. And they're going to turn that, I think, into the medical closet for storage purposes. We have, we've been very fortunate, the community's been very, very generous in terms of equipment. And so we don't even lend it, we just give it to people, we're able to, with a few exceptions, we're able to give people the equipment that they need. And a lot of times, they'll bring it back then, too. So the medical closet will be moving out of its temporary location right now in the social services area, back to the area there. And what it'll do is people will come in, they'll sign up, they'll sign in for something, sign up for something, they'll give them a slip or so, they'll go back, and one of the volunteers will go back and get it for them, hand it to them on the west side of the building. The other construction is a reconfiguration of the front office, but that I'm going to put off until the next budget, and so we'll deal with that this spring and on the next board. The reconfiguring that front office in order to make better use of the space, as well as to provide a different location for the dispatcher, for the buses, as well as for the deputy administrator, to be by the administrator, a variety of different things in that regard. So there's some work being done on that, but that will not be this fiscal year, it will be next fiscal year. I also, and I know we did cancel or stop the taxi ride program. We've had no, no one use it for, I think we've had. Yeah, mostly, I think we maybe had 10 people this whole year. And I think it's partially because of the undependability of taxis right now. The lower, the fewer taxis, because Uber and Lyft are taking more and more of that market, their share. So what we're looking at is, we've done away with that program, we're looking at maybe some sort of partnership with Lyft, whereby people would get a discount to be, if they used Lyft. And that would be a nice compliment, kind of, for our buses, which can only go so far outside of our boundaries. We're pretty generous with that, but nonetheless, we can only go so far. And then the trip program goes across multiple, can go across boundaries, but it's for Social Security and for medical, it's not for other general things. So Lyft would give a little bit of help to people to be able to, seniors, disabled, to go beyond our borders for non-medical or Social Security reasons. We're in, we're in, we're in work, we're in a, we're on a committee right now, Izzy and myself, with a working group with Commissioner Trevor, Maggie Trevor, Cook County Commissioner, looking at transportation needs of our community out here, particularly with the very limited pace service that we have. And I think we're making some very good headway in terms of lower income in seniors and disabled. But the issue for those people in the middle, it's just not, it's, you know, there were some discussions, the townships being involved with, you know, providing transportation to people to get to work and things like that. And it just, from my perspective, it's outside of our boundaries, what we can do from financial or from a logistical point of view. And that, while we can work the lower end, and we can work seniors and disabled, to get involved from a transportation point of view, other than maybe specific things like, well, one of the ideas that Izzy has is having a bus go to the manufactured homes once a month or once a week, or I'm not sure, that would go directly there, because that's a place where some people don't have cars, and where there's maybe a specific need for help to get here. But otherwise, to go beyond some of these rifle shots, and to go beyond our seniors and disabled, and go beyond the lower-income transportation support, it becomes, it would turn us into a pace, and we're not pace. So just, if anyone's interested in talking more about that, or getting on one of the calls that we periodically have with this working group, you're more than welcome to. It's really looking at where do we go with transportation, with pace, the townships, the county, and some of the schools like Harper and so forth. And unfortunately, there's no easy solution. There's ways to deal with parts of it, but there's no overall easy solution. And that's something that's going to be ongoing, that we'll have over the next several years. Let's go to, the other thing is, we mentioned the Mental Health and Wellness Committee has, is beginning to meet, and is putting together recommendations, which will be included in our budget for the, they're not grants, they're contracts is really what they are. We're contracting for services, basically. And that's moving forward. With Trustee Perns, I need to sit down, and we need to get ourselves organized to start in January with the Social Services Review, which is the annual review that we do of our social services component of our operation. Last year, we did the decennial, but a non-decennial year, since the General Social Services Review Committee, and I'll have to talk to David about that. It really shouldn't be particularly expansive, because we're taking the existing report and basically reviewing the existing report, seeing if there's, if that's, if it's accomplished what we wanted, or if there's other things we want to add, or that we want to change. So it's really working each year with updating the report, is what it's doing. But it gives us a fresh look with residents of what we're doing and how we're doing it. It came up, the decennial, it came up with a couple, I'm sure you guys all saw the report, but there's a couple ideas that I thought were rather, we wouldn't have maybe thought of otherwise, so I thought it was good. And the next thing is, some of the seasonal issues, seasonal programs you're doing. We had the Cereal Bowl, which you guys are well aware of, Rolling Meadows won for the first time, since the very first time. We raised 7,050 boxes, that's more than double, almost triple what we've done in the past. It was fantastic, and I think it was really benefited from the mayors and the communities getting involved. And I think that was really, really outstanding. We participated in a coat drive. The coat drive, is that, we were doing that connection with a church, or what was?
Yes.
Yeah. How did that, do you remember how that, how did that work? They had one, and then it was, they had to outsource it, or what happened?
Yeah, they used to team up with Catholic charities, but Catholic charities closed all of their locations from what I understand, and moved south. And so they're not even in the northwest suburbs from what I hear, we don't know anything quite fact, just by what I've heard. And we had interaction with the people that worked with Catholic charities, from a church in, it's over by the airport.
St. Paul of the Cross in Park Ridge.
Park Ridge, right. So after they had been here, we kind of became comfortable with them. And so she called, the lady that was in charge called me one day and said, hey, here's what happened, can we work with you guys to do this thing still, because we want to keep it going? And I said, yes, and we figured it out from there, and it went great. We had, we actually, Mandy and Izzy and I think a couple other people got together on that, and Mandy put out all these flyers and stuff on social media. We just made, we pushed ourselves into it and asked our community to put in coats and stuff for those people as well. And I think Izzy said they kind of, you guys go for like 100 or so?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, like within 10 days. It was like, boom. And then the other place had some, and so we just kind of went from there. And it was, it was great. And they're, we didn't get, all of them weren't dispersed, but they're kept, they're going to be kept here under cardboard and everything, so they won't get all dirty and everything, and we'll use them for next year. But this room was full. I mean, I saw pictures of it after I came back, and there was coats all down this thing. They had it really set up well, some people were donating scarves and gloves and stuff which they didn't ask for, but they did that as well. So it was something that spurred the moment that we said yes to, because we could, and we wanted to help the people in our township, so. And the lady, when I was talking to her, she said, I told her yes right away, she said, yeah, we'd like to work with you. And I said, okay, yeah, no deal, no problem. It was dead silence on the phone. She goes, that's the quickest yes. Well, what would you, I said, you were handing gloves, I said, if you guys mind welcoming to work with us, it's great, so. They were very happy, and I think that you guys said, well, we should.
It went really well, yeah, they had coat racks set up everywhere, women, children's, men's, and they're volunteers, I don't know, it was like a personal shopper, so they walked through with them, they helped them try on, they had full-length mirrors.
Wow.
And we extended an extra day, too, didn't we? We added.
It was Tuesday.
It was, but they did extend it Wednesday.
Yeah.
For marrying women at ours, so, but to get anybody else within the community who wasn't able to come over.
And she, I think she said, too, that they, that we'd had extra coats, that they, that said, I didn't advertise as big as they would have, because they didn't know how much they'd had. But now this experience with us, they believe that they're going to have a lot more ability to advertise and reach out, because the partnership with us, they feel, is going to work really well, not only in getting coats, but getting people in. And so this was sort of a first try by them, and they just, I think they're really excited about it. It was great for our community, too.
They were very happy, they were very happy with the setup, the way we worked with them, just, you know, giving them whatever they wanted, basically. And they did a really good job of getting their people from Park Ridge over here, so.
Right. Mandy, you want to say?
We did get a bunch of coats for the seniors that are on the buses. Like, I know their sizes and their settings, so I was able to provide many coats that were left over to a lot of our drivers.
Great.
Oh, great. Great. No, they're all working.
Nobody works behind a stage.
Nobody tells you what's going on.
I don't know what I mean.
All right, you had mentioned some about the Thanksgiving baskets, pass, was that yesterday and today?
Today was the first day. It started at, people were lining up at 9:30 a.m., but I wish I knew how many people we had come through, but it was going all day, all day long.
When it first started, the people were in line, they came in the west entrance and started making lines, and when we got to the back of the building, it was double, and we paralleled each other all the way around to the back. And Landmark Island was full of cars through this lane closest to the curb. It went, I looked out the door, because somebody said something about cars or something, I looked, they were way past, I mean, they were all lined up. It went, I looked out the door, because somebody said something about cars or something, I looked, they were way past. I mean, they were all lined up. So Al Grove ended up sending over a, a police guy to, to direct traffic and to make sure that light, you know, got passed and everything, with everybody getting in and getting out safely. So, and Romero was over there for the longest time getting them out when the light was green.
So we need to keep that in mind for next year, huh?
We had a good representation, as we all, with all the departments and why that was available. They called me right after they got started, said, we need to go over here and over there, so. Everybody was jumping in, it was great, so.
Everybody was very happy.
How many, how many baskets do we, do we, do we?
A thousand.
A thousand?
What the gold is, yeah, a thousand.
Great, fantastic. Okay, so that's the Thanksgiving basket. And then we have the Senior Angel Tree, which is going extraordinarily well. In fact, I know one lady called up, Izzy was saying, and said, can I pick up some, 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 some tags? Then she came in and she said, I need fifty of them. And, and Izzy said, I, I, well, we haven't got fifty on here right now. She got upset, got mad about it. So Izzy then got, got, they, they made up tags and stuff like that, even before they, they knew what anybody needed, so they got them to them. And so there's been people coming in regularly. The tree is, are constantly having to put tags on the tree. So that's, that's going, 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 going very well. And, and if anything, we just, we, we probably need more seniors to put tags on the tree, is what we really need. So Dick, did you put one on?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, all right. Then the Holiday Gift Cards for Kids is the other program we're doing. That's where people donate in order to get gift cards that we can give to parents, so their parents can buy presents for the kids. We, we switched to that, rather than giving something directly to the kids, because we thought it would be valuable for the parents to be able to pick something out and give it to their children, rather than us doing it per se. So I think, I think that, that, that'll go well. And then we have the Toys for Kids this year, because we had a huge donation of toys. I don't know if we'll continue that, but we're doing it this year, right, is what we're, how's that working?
That, that's good. The, there's a group that we deal with, that they are kind of an umbrella organization. And somebody in the area that did a food drive went through them and said that we were the recipients. So that's how we contacted them. And so when we saw, they, they sent me an email and said, hey, we're, we have toys available, if you're interested. And Izzy and I talked about it and we said, yeah, no reason why we shouldn't do it. So we have semi-full of toys that we're going to be giving away. And they gave, they, there's three different things that they, we have to conform to, but nothing, any big deal. And so it will be another Donnybrook like we had. Because the kids are going to come in and they are allowed to have three toys max per kid. And so, and it just won't be the whole garage, it'll be just a set up area where Mandy and Izzy and they and who else or Romero, I think, just kind of figured out where it was going to go. It'll be simple. Yeah, but it'll be good, because a lot of kids, we get a lot of nice toys, brand new, all in a box, Aspro.
A lot of Star Wars.
Aspro.
Aspro. Yeah.
And it's not limited to township residents, so.
Open.
Coming to be a max, so we've been pushing it out. All of our departments have known. We have flyers on both entrances. We emailed it to everybody, it's on our website. We were giving them out with the Thanksgiving baskets today, so.
When is the giveaway for the toys?
It's December fourteenth, from ten a.m. to one p.m.
Okay, thanks.
And if we have any leftover, they were particular in regards to what we could do with them. But we had asked them upfront, is if we had any left, could we give them to another township in nearby area? They said, no problem, though. So we can share with our community.
Is there any, any other of these programs? So we had mentioned the Cereal Bowl, the Coat Giveaway, the Thanksgiving Baskets, the Senior Angel Tree, the Holiday Gift Cards for Kids, and then the Toys for Kids. Is there, that's, those are the programs?
Yeah, that's it right now, it's really the holiday programs are a big focus and then the toy drivers.
And I think what's great about this is not only is this, is this a benefit for our community, particularly in some cases, those that would not be able to have a Thanksgiving dinner like that, or be able to get presents for their kids, or be able to, 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 to participate in the holidays the way we love to. But it also gives the township more exposure in terms of the other services that we provide. And once again, we want to make people to know who we are and know what we provide, so that when problems arise, they think of the township and they know, here's where they can come for, for financial assistance. Here they come for counseling, here they come for youth, youth services, here they can come for their taxes, the help with their taxes. The, the more we give ourselves exposure, so it's a win-win, it's, gives us exposure as well as provides a service to the community. So I, I really find these programs, which Mandy does a lot of the work on, are very, very beneficial. I guess the last thing I mentioned is that our Holiday Party, so make sure you keep that free. It's the tenth of January, it will be at Cooper's Hawk again. And once again, we'll have the elected officials take care of the holiday spirit. Okay, is there any questions for me?
Yeah, can I just, not to put you on the spot or anything, but for those of us, for those of us who are unable to go to Toy.
Yeah.
Tell us what happened down there.
Well, I, I, it was a, it was different this year and I, I'm not sure why they shifted from Sunday, Monday, Tuesday to, to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I'm not sure why that was done, but it did reduce, I think, the attendance a little bit, is what it did. They had a presentation, was a motivational speaker, who was the primary presenter. And then they had the educational sessions, which I think are very good for particularly trustees that are relatively new, have been, haven't been for, you know, I mean, have only been a trustee for two, three, four years. After that, it, it becomes more a rifle shot. So for me, after twenty-four years, what I usually go to is a legislative update or the, or the, or the, ask the attorney, or maybe if they have some special, like maybe something on how you work with illegal immigrants, how you work with those situations. Those are the things, otherwise, but I think the other value is just networking, being able to then, for me, meet with some of their trustees, or meet with some of the other supervisors, talk about what they're doing, how they're doing, what issues they're running into. So I think there's a real value of going down there and being there. I think the educational component is most important to elected officials that are maybe in their first or second term. Yeah, and then, yeah, and then I was honored to get awarded the, the Supervisor of the Year for basically for social services, so that was, that was great. And it's, it's terrible for, I mean, what's terrible for me is that, and I've given upteen speeches and talked before huge crowds in the military as well as everything, and I got up there for this and, and I was getting emotional.
You did great.
I was having trouble getting through it, so. And of course, I couldn't just say thank you, I had to talk for a while. Particularly to recognize that it wasn't, you know, I mean, you know, even a, even an average supervisor can look good when you've got a great staff, and we've got a great staff here from the social services side. And I, I really felt it was the caseworkers and the social services members that should be recognized and realized that, that in a way, yeah, the supervisor's the face of the department, but the arms and the legs that do all the work and the heart of that department and those services are the caseworkers and the staff. And, and so I was very honored to get it, but I also believe that the really, the real component, what really makes that work is the people. And we've got, we've got a great, great group of people in the, in the, in the, in the social services and the youth services and the senior services. I mean, we've got a great staff and you've got two of them here right now, so. Anyway, so that, it was, it was, it was a nice, and Dave, David was kind enough to drive me down and back. He had to listen to me all the way down and all the way back.
It was only six hours.
He talks a lot too, I have to say. He does talk a lot too. They turned the radio up real high.
We listened to one song.
Yeah, we had a podcast, we never listened to the podcast, yeah. Anyway, so it was a, I think I would encourage you guys, I mean, even though I know you guys have been, been, you know, been here forever, nonetheless, I find that it is helpful. I find to go down the night before, at least the next day. And, and Ellen, and I, I mentioned one other thing. Usually that, the night of the first day, I'll, the supervisor takes out the, the staff that's down there. And I think that's a real good opportunity to, to get to know some of the staff in a more informal type basis. You know, we know each other business-wise or work-wise, but I think that's a great opportunity to actually get to talk. So it was Renee and Andrea and Cory and David and I, and it was, it was, it was a nice evening, it was a great evening. And we had, we went to Cooper's Hawk because I have bottles of wine there that are backed up who knows how long. They drank it all, I don't know. So we had, we had a good time. So I, I would encourage anyone to participate, that at least for, to go down, just see for the, even the networking component of it, I think is really, really helpful. Okay, is there anything else? Any other questions?
No.
Not? Okay, then why don't we go back and we do the- Oh, we can, a motion to approve the reports?
So moved, second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, we're going to go back and do the Transportation Department's fiftieth anniversary raffle drawing. And Ellen, you want to say a few words about the Transportation Department right now? Fifty years.
Fifty years.
Ellen, better grow up.
But to be honest with you, one of our original bus drivers now rides the bus.
Really?
Yes, Diane Julia.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Waited, waited pictures taken in front of the bus right earlier in the year.
Yeah, yeah, and so she, she, after all those years, did not change at all about her opinions, about her love, about her ideas of why transportation is so important to seniors. I thought maybe she would have gotten a little tarnished here and there, you know, with some of our patrons, but no, she didn't. So transportation is evolving. We purchased a new vehicle, we're about to hire another driver. We're constantly seeing how we can add to our services. Just like going out a little bit of the boundaries, now going to the social security office, to the driver's license facility, because one of our seniors that lives in one of the assisted living homes could not have her procedure because she did not have a photo ID. Seems crazy, but it was true. So we had to rush her off for just a state ID with a photo, because she could not have her procedure without. So that was a, a really important need, right?
Right.
At that time. So we're always trying to add just a little bit extra as the need approaches and, and the needs change constantly, so you, you have to kind of be really flexible.
Yeah.
And have your ear to the seniors and understand what's going on and what their needs are.
Right.
So I'm so excited about the raffle. The seniors are so excited. We have about ninety seniors that wanted to participate. We've been collecting names for the last about two months. They've all called many times. So we'll pull the names, we'll inform them tomorrow, and then I will visit them with all the fanfare that they deserve and getting their.
Great, all right.
No. I just said to give, all right.
How many are there?
There's about, so there are going to be four winners, about nineteen eight.
Well, each of you guys, each of these four, each draw.
And now of our fifty years, we're giving out a fifty dollar gift card.
Oh, that's great.
That's so much for the arthritis, I should begin to pop.
I entered about ten times.
You can only win once.
All right, here's the first one.
Thank you. So, do you want me to knock them?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bagdiak is the first one. I started in that, and so I know all these names too. Mrs. Wheat is the second one. Diane Rock is the third. And Mrs. Billis, last.
That is nice. So to be honest with you, we've almost hit all of the different communities. There's all the different entities, I know where they all live. Two of them are in a facility where they couldn't go. A facility right down the street from Walmart, and we take them to that Walmart every Thursday. So they, and the other one goes to the other Walmart on Tuesday, so actually, it kind of worked out.
Good.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you for all you do, yeah. All right, then we'll go on, there's no correspondence, there's no old business, so we'll go to the new business. The first one is Resolution Twenty Twenty Three O Seven, a regular board meeting scheduled, third revision. And that's to change the date of the board meeting to the, I don't have it in front of me, what day is it? December nineteenth. That's for two reasons. One, it's a selfish one on my part, so that I'm able to attend the meeting and, because we're working on the levy and the budget already. The second thing is, it gives us a little more time between this meeting and the December meeting, because we've moved it forward and it starts getting closer and closer, so it gives us a little more time between meetings. So if there's a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I think everyone has kind of expressed their ability to attend that. So if there's no discussion, we have a roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, so that's passes. Then Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Ten, a regular board meeting scheduled for Twenty Twenty Five. My only concern on that is that, where did I go here? I had it here. My concern is April, I mean, May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day. I think if you, you look at that and if you, anybody wants to check on there, otherwise too. I think Memorial Day is the twenty-sixth, and I think that we have the meeting is the twenty-sixth. So that would need to be adjusted, if anybody wants to, if there's any discussion on that or what you'd like, like to change that to. We could, we could, if you want, if somebody wants to make a recommendation tonight, make, then we'd make, then we'd make a motion to approve with, with the amended, with the amended date, or we could just wait if you want.
Why don't you take care of it now?
Would you want to keep it on a, on a Monday?
Yeah, whatever.
When is the swearing in for the next?
I think the-
It might be the nineteenth.
Maybe, I think it's the second Tuesday in May.
Oh, Tuesday, okay then. Yeah, you want to do the nineteenth?
So just move it to the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Just do it on the day of the swearing in?
Yeah, it shouldn't be the same time.
No, it would be a different day then, if we did it on the Monday before. It's up to you though.
Okay.
What would you guys like to do? What would it be preference? The board meeting is the, yeah, the, the board meeting could be on nineteenth and the swearing in, was the second Monday you said, as you said?
Second Tuesday?
Second Tuesday, so the, it would be the thirteenth, so we could, you could do the nineteenth if you wanted. You do swearing in on the thirteenth and do the meeting on the nineteenth? Does that work?
Yeah, I don't see why not. That would work.
Is this swearing in on, on May thirteenth?
All right.
Yeah, because elections is April first, so it's-
Okay.
So the fourteenth would be my last meeting with you guys, so that's okay. I mean, the thirteenth, okay. All right, so if I get a motion to, to approve Resolution Twenty Four Ten, regular board meeting scheduled for two thousand, with, amended to, to make, to make the May meeting on May nineteenth? Is there a motion to do that?
So moved, second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any other dates that need to be addressed? No?
Well, is that, are we cool with the, the December? I know that December, it's good to have a month between, but that's like Christmas week, does that matter to anybody, or?
It's the twenty-second.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
I don't know, it doesn't really matter. It's fine with me, I don't usually travel.
We can, I change it.
You can change it, like we've done before, if you want to just go with this right now and then you can change that and get closer if it's a problem.
No, that sounds good.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Ten, regular board meeting scheduled twenty-five as amended. Can I get the roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Eleven, office closing dates for calendar twenty-five. If you guys have had a chance to look at that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Do you see any problems there?
Last year, when you and I put this together, as far as the times, we had Good Friday, closed at twelve thirty.
Yes.
So I left that on there.
Yeah.
But several of the employees with small kids- But several of the employees with small kids asked if we could do the same thing with Christmas Eve because, you know, we're dead on that day anyway. There's nobody coming into the building because they all think we're closed. So they just wanted me to bring it up to see if the board would approve doing that same thing half day on that day.
So it is, it is on here, though, yeah, the twenty-fourth, close at twelve-thirty.
I wrote it in there, but it wasn't like that last year.
Oh, okay, all right, but if we, okay.
Change I made.
So that's a change, that's a change versus last year. But we moved and seconded this, so as long as everyone's approved. With the, the only thing that's different from last year is that we've given them extra half day on the Wednesday, on the Christmas Eve.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's fair.
No, that's good.
Any problems with that?
No.
Well, we're just closed to the twenty-fourth.
Could close if you want to close, but we usually do a half, we usually will have a half day on a non-holiday day like that because people, sometimes people often want to come in and do something in the morning, but we don't have to. You could do whatever you wanted. So moved and seconded right now to approve this, but we could, and we could, you could vote it down and put a new motion if you wanted to.
I'm okay with that.
I think you're giving them, you're giving another extra half day. I think that's probably appropriate.
Somebody works or someone would have that day off. They need to come into their township business or something.
Well, why don't we stick with a half a day, then?
Okay.
Yeah, the twelve-thirty, I think is good.
All right, so it's moved, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed calendar close, I mean, office closing dates for calendar year twenty-twenty-five. Resolution 202411. Can we get a roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, now we go to purchase of used fourteen-passenger and six-wheelchair bus and the EcoLine software. Okay, so the bus is the new bus that we purchased. And the, and the EcoLine software is the new software, which will provide real-time dispatch capabilities for us. Rather than having to try to have people calling in with a problem and then the dispatcher having to call the bus and trying to work with the bus, doesn't know where they are, what they are. This system will allow us to maintain track of where the buses are at all times to be able to enter information into the system and it will automatically adjust the routes and the systems. The bus drivers will have an iPad on their, a pad on their bus that will then inform them of where their next stop is. Sort of like they'll be in Amazon is what they'll be like, so. I think that that's, I think it's a, I think it's a great, a great addition, particularly as we're becoming, we're in more buses and more riders. It allows us to be more efficient and more effective in terms of what we do. Because we've run into situations where, let's say someone goes to the doctor and they're supposed to be picked up at two o'clock and they get delayed, they don't get, they don't get out, they don't get out, it's, you know, three o'clock, and it just screws up the schedule all the way along. Well, if we, if they're able to call back and say, I'm not into the office yet, I'm gonna be late, the, this is, this software can go ahead and make those, can make those changes, which I think is, which is a great, great for us.
I think it's probably overdue, I would say, right?
Yeah, I would say so.
We should've had it already, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and to be honest, we're not, we're, we're, one of the, I mean, there are a couple townships have this, but we're, they're not, not all of them have. Yeah, EcoLine.
There's a good number to do. Most around here does. Schaumburg, Palatine, Albus.
But it's becoming standard now, is what I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right. So that's EcoLine. So the board, I guess what I'm, if we're looking at this, what the purpose of this resolution is, is that the board approved the Resolution 202406, which allowed general assistance funds to be used in other areas of the township, if you remember, as long as they were related to the, to the social services role of the township. And you guys, when you passed that resolution, you gave the supervisor specific areas that he could take money from the GA and use for other non-GA-specific purposes, but social service-related. The law allowed us to do that. You guys passed a resolution providing the framework of what I could do. We were, we, 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 we had talked about buying the new bus using those funds, but at that time, we needed to get the approval of the bus before that resolution had passed. So we bought the bus out of Road and Bridge, is it Road and Bridge Funds? No, out of town fund, out of town funds. What we're looking to do now is say, okay, we bought that out of the town funds. Our goal was to use the GA funds to buy that bus, but we weren't able to do it because the resolution hadn't been passed at that point. What we're now doing is basically, what we're doing is like to use the GA funds to refund the town, use town funds and pay back, I mean, use GA funds to repay, pay back the town. And this is an example of one of these things that the GA funds could be used for, that are social services-related, but aren't specifically GAE, A. Plus, as I said, and in the future, you don't have to do it this way, I'm only using that money for one-time items. Where we're just buying something, or we're doing something, not where it's an ongoing expense. We're taking on an ongoing expense for it. So at this point, I guess that's the one thing, is this would be, this is a transfer because the resolution was approved at the same time as the purchase of the bus. So we need to kind of backtrack in order to now put the GA funds in to cover it and, and that money, the money that the town fund paid, to go back to them. The other part of this is using GA funds to pay for the software program, for the EcoLane. So those are the two, two items. The transfer money, transfer money that we had spent from town fund back to town fund and using the GA money instead for the bus, and then paying for EcoLane. Both of those are one-time items. The cost of the bus was thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five. The one-time cost of EcoLane is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy, so that total is sixty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five, which we can more than cover out of GA without any sort of impact on GA, NEA. Does anybody have any questions on that before I ask for a, should I, is there a motion to approve?
Do we do that already?
Pardon?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there a, can we, any question, any discussion on this?
No.
What was the total on the EcoLane again? Twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah. So if this, once again, if this is approved, just to remind, is that, it goes sort of like fifteen times, this is typical of me. But what, what we're doing is we're taking the money that the town fund paid for the bus and putting it back to pound, town fund and using the GA money now to pay for the bus. It's an accounting, it's basically an accounting move is what it is. It's a paper move. And then the second thing is authorizing the use of the money for EcoLane, for the EcoLane software purchase. Now, the way, the way that the resolution that we had passed before gave me the authority to do that. However, I want to get the board's permission approval on items of more significance like this. I want you guys to be as responsible as I am. So if we all go to jail, you go with me. Yeah.
And it'll happen just like a regular resolution or work that's...
Right. And like I said, too, I really, for the EcoLane, I really, the way you guys did it, I could go ahead and expend those funds. But I, I, and I don't know if the next supervisor will, wanted to come back to get approval for that, even though I could just do it, because I think it's appropriate that you guys have the financial oversight on this. Okay, so what the resolution, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No.
If not, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, proposed ordinance twenty-four, twenty-two forty-three, Town Fund General Assistance Levy for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. The levy is, is, as you know, is it's our, our notice to the county saying this is the money that we need to raise in taxes. And then this fund, with these funds, then we'll determine our budget. This is our, this is our ordinance, giving Cook County, telling Cook County, this is what we need them to raise in taxes for us. If the, on the county, on the township, on the town fund, we're asking for a total general town fund amount of two million, two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four. For the GA, General Assistance Fund, we're asking for two million, seven hundred and twenty-three, four hundred and seventy-three. So two million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-three. Now with, with that, there is no increase. That is an unchanged, that's an unchanged levy. That is, we're not increasing our request for additional funds. I have been asked by the, by our deputy administrator that we consider increasing, and we don't have to do it now. This is just information right now. This will sit on the table for twenty days and then at our next meeting, we will actually approve the levy. But she's asked that we consider doing what we did last time, which was not increase the GA, but for the town fund, to increase it by point two-five percent again as for, so those funds can go to, go towards the capital replacement fund.
Two point five percent?
Two point five percent, yeah.
Okay, I thought you said point two-five.
No, five, two point five percent, two point five percent, and that would be, that's equivalent of about sixty thousand dollars. And that's what it was last time. And that sixty thousand went into the capital improvement, the capital replacement fund. That's the fund that we build up to replace roofing, to replace air conditioning, to replace, you know, any capital items. And we establish a replacement plan for that. And we, and you do that by saying, okay, we have our air conditioning and we expect it to live this long and we're gonna have to replace it this date, and we're assuming this is the cost. And our roof is gonna take this long, and you develop a schedule for that and determine how much you'll need to replace these items and build a replacement fund. We have not had that. We've dealt with these issues as they've arisen, which is not necessarily the most effective way and a little bit risky way of doing it. So this would be, so you can think about that. That's just something that's been put forward and we can address that more specifically at the next meeting. But what I, what I, what I put forward here in this ordinance, twenty-two forty-three, Town Fund General Assistance, is unchanged. Not a change in the, in the, in the levy from last year. And what she's proposing is on the town fund, not the general assistance, is to increase it slightly so as to help fund a capital replacement fund. And that's the primary purpose. Okay? We don't, this is just, this is just informative. We don't, I don't, I don't, Paul, I don't pass any, ask for any action on this today, do I? No, I don't. He's not listening, but...
That's right, we don't.
Okay, if we go, that's, we go, the next, next item is, well, does anybody have any questions on that, first of all?
No.
Okay. All right, we will address that in the next meeting again. Same thing here with proposed ordinance twenty-two forty-four, Road District. That's a road department levy, unchanged from last year. Part of the reason that's unchanged is we're still trying to build up the reserves. This will be levying more money than we're expending. And part of that's to build the reserves back up again, because it takes about a million dollars to take care of half of the roads, redo half of the roads we do. Now, we've got fewer roads. We did lose the ones in Mount Prospect. But nonetheless, we should have reserves to be able to redo, do a redo of the, of the other half of the roads in the next several years. In the meantime, we'll be doing, you know, like we did this last year, we did a thirty thousand dollar patch up for Branniger. We don't, we don't have to do a total redo, because those roads are generally in decent shape, so we'll do patching, but we should be building reserves so that when you need to do the redo, you've got, you've got the money to do it. I will say that you guys may want to consider next year or the year after, once those reserves are built back up again, the fact that we're, our road, our mile, road mileage has gotten smaller, at some point, you may want to reduce the levy or, or do something with it, do something else with it. But at this point, I think this is the appropriate, the appropriate thing to do. The, yeah, and then eventually, at some point, the road levy may just go away. If we lose, if we, if we have virtually no roads left, the road levy will go away and the remaining responsibility would just come under the town fund. But at this point, we still have enough responsibility where we don't need a road department, but we need a road fund to be able to fund the services we provide. So that's what, that's what, that's what the levy is. Twenty-two forty-four RD Road Department Levy is unchanged from last year and it's, should be able to more than cover our expenses and also help us build up the reserve and allow us also to do some, some various odds and ends work, patchwork on Martha and Lincoln and the Branniger areas as needed next year. But it will allow us to build up funds for a future major overhaul. Okay, so those two items, those two ordinance will lay on the table for, have to be twenty days. Our next meeting's in twenty-six. So that's more than enough. And think about if you want to increase, decrease, leave it the same, whatever it is, we can, that will be addressed at that meeting when we have to approve the levy.
I got a question.
Yeah.
What's with the street lighting? Where is that at?
The speed line? Well, the levy is just a placeholder again for being able to, I mean, the specifics on the levy aren't always, aren't always specifically tied to that particular item. The levy is structured in a way to be able to produce the amount of funds that we generally need. We don't have specifically, the levy isn't based on, like a budget on specific items. So that may not be, that money may not be specifically used for that.
Okay.
I mean, if you go through the levy, if you go through the levy, you'll find that generally speaking, it provides a framework for the funds we need. How specifically it's used within that is based on the budget you approve. But generally speaking, this provides the framework for it, the amount of general money we need, and then it's allocated differently than the levy in a lot of cases in the budget.
Okay.
It's not a budget in and of itself. Okay? So those are the two, the two ordinances, and we'll address them at the next meeting. So is there any, there's no other questions on that? Then I'll go, is any discussions or comments from the trustees? No. I will mention one thing, if you want to look in your, when you look at your package, look at the passport.
Did I notice that?
Yeah, it's, it's just exploded.
Huge.
And our resident services, with passports, handicap placards, hunting and fishing licenses, notary of the public services, has become much more significant than it, than it was in the past, probably because those services aren't being provided as broadly as they used to be. So our Resident Services Office, which is just down the hall from Connie's office, that now has, has now, we created that office because of the increasing demand and particularly on the passport side. That's not even through the end of the year yet.
Also, I saw in the food pantry.
Yeah.
Is that, for October, it says eleven hundred? Is that like the highest it's ever been, or?
Yeah, eleven hundred.
Eleven oh-one, it says, yeah, for October.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be breaking twelve hundred, I think, by the end of the year.
So the cereal boxes, they're gonna, the cereal boxes we got, are they gonna last throughout the year?
Well, they'll last as long as people take them. I mean, you know, we've got, what was it, three thousand?
Last, last year. No, last year was three thousand, this year it's seven thousand fifty.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. It was almost double.
What do you think that, what does that mean? What does seven thousand boxes mean? Is that in terms of how long they last?
Seven months.
Really?
Or less.
Because you, obviously, you kind of want them to last the year, obviously.
Yeah.
It's nice, but I mean, I'm just sick to death that we got as many as we got.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Even if they only get four thousand.
Yeah, Kaylee was...
Still like thirty percent more than we had the year before.
Kaylee was saying that they used to, you know, back when it first started, it covered the year.
Right.
And then it started being, you know, three-quarters of the year. And then this last one was only like half the year. And now this is, she thinks is, she said ordinarily, you would think this would cover the whole year, but she said it probably covered seven, eight months of the year, which is great, you know?
Yeah. No, it was awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rolling Meadows really...
Boxes, we thought that was great, you know?
Well, Rolling Meadows really stepped up.
It's good, we have all the storage.
They really stepped up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Rolling Meadows did, yeah.
Yeah.
It was all in the hallways.
And the mayor got involved in it too.
Yeah, both mayors did, yeah.
It was really cool, yeah.
This is the, the next step up, because, you know, we had the principals a year before. Now, they were more engaged this year and then the mayors got into it. Craig really liked it. I mean, you know, they had a big display.
Yeah.
You guys see that in...
You see that picture?
I saw it on the daily...
Where the guy eating cereal, and one of the trustees eating cereal in the background?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it really, and people, people have mentioned it to me as well, too. It was, oh, it's a cereal bowl you guys did, you know?
Yeah, that's cool.
That sounds kind of neat.
All the football games presented them and they was visible for week after week after week.
So I went to that game when they did it. I didn't participate with these guys. They went on the field. They went on the field, but I was kind of watching it and that, the Rolling Meadows, you know, crew, the kids, they were really excited. They were, they were really whipped up, yeah.
Yeah, those, they were screaming.
I couldn't believe it, though. The announcer, when they announced, they said that Rolling Meadows High School beat Al Grove. I was like, I can't believe that. I mean, I mean, it's all, you know, it's awesome, obviously, you know, for the food pantry. But yeah, I couldn't believe it, you know?
Well, that's like, that's like Mayor Johnson said.
But those people that were pushing it at the school, like, you know, Joe Bush does at Al Grove, he's been doing that from the beginning. And then Jim Boiles at Rolling Meadows, now he got a lot of help this year, I think, because they were kind of just a lot of love with it, like that.
Yeah, no, that was, that was awesome.
No, it's, it's, it's great. And then like, like Johnson said, which Mayor Johnson said, Greg said, is, it's, you know, when the, when Tom Robb at the Journal said, you know, well, Rolling Meadows won, he said, well, no. He said, who won was our residents.
That's true.
Those are one.
And he's right, he's right. It was a, it was a, it was a, it was a fun thing for the kids. It was also a, a, a great little kind of competition, but at the same token, what it really was is the winners were our community.
Totally, yeah, completely.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Cool.
So, let's see, was there anything, there was something else I had in mind, but I can't remember what it was right now. So if there, is there any other, anything else, any other questions or comments or anything like that? Not? Okay, then I will, I will, do a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.